Okay. We'll be starting up our work session as soon as staff's ready.
Well, Donna's coming up to get her presentation set up. I'll give my standard intro for the budget.
Thanks, thank you.
It's nice to be able to do the budget on time as we have in the past. Last year, again, as a reminder, we were delayed until the very end and we tasked the council with taking in and digesting a lot of information over a short period of time, just simply because we didn't know what the world was going to look like as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. So it's nice to have started this process when we normally start it, to have all of our internal meetings, to have our meetings with the council. As a reminder, we met, I believe, April 29th and started our CIP kickoff and had some conversations about Senate Bill 13 and what our intentions were for building a budget, as well as going on the CIP tour to look at what is clearly the most expensive cost center within our budget, but also the most visible and most impactful to our residents. So it has been very, very nice to have a little bit of time to space this out. We've got a maintenance budget, which I think Donna will probably share with you, which is, we haven't added a whole heck of a lot of anything new, but the things that we've added that are new, we're pretty excited about, and we're going to share those with you this evening. I like to say every year that the budget is a value statement. It is what we do because we value it. It is the most important document that we put out. When we subsidize things, that is where the value is. Things that don't make money, but we choose to do them anyway, which is to subsidize them, means we value, we value public safety, we value parks, we value things that don't necessarily have a return in dollars investment, but they define who we are as a community and who we aspire to be, who we want to be. So the budget is a value statement, and I think we've got one that speaks to our values, speaks to the goals and the objectives of the city council, as were approved in February. And I think it's something that definitely staff's proud of, and we hope that, hope that you are too. But we're here to answer any questions that you have as we go through the presentation. That being said, I'm going to turn over to Donna.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. Two weeks ago, we had our revenue summary for the budget. Tonight, we're really shifting more to the expenditure side of it. And we're going to talk about what funds are budgeted, the draft budget highlights. Hopefully, you all found your book at your place tonight and saw it included with the Look at just a budget overview and talk again about the revenue neutral rate, and lastly, take a look at the budget calendar. So we look at the funds that we budget for. We have our general fund and risk management reserve fund. The general fund is kind of the dump bucket for everything that can just be expended, that doesn't have constraints on what it can be spent on. Special revenue funds, we have the special highway fund. That's the fund that collects gas tax revenues from the state. We then in turn use those funds to maintain our streets and highways. That's about $300,000 a year. We have the transient gas tax fund, that's the hotel tax. Special parks and recs, special alcohol, those are funded by the alcohol tax distribution from the state. Debt service is kind of, you know, self-explanatory. It's where we pay the principal and interest on our bonds. And then we have the two capital project funds, the capital improvement, which has all the big street projects, building projects, and then the equipment reserve that has the major equipment in it. Just to kind of give you a quick overview of what was included in the budget, there's a 3% salary increase for city staff. No new employees are requested. All the current services that are being provided by the city now have been fully funded. In addition, funding was provided for additional mental health resources for the police department for those mental health calls that really could use expert resources for. There is funding for a telephone upgrade, for new financial accounting software, for new equipment in the public works, police, parks, equipment. And then there's some additional grant opportunities that were identified. Total general fund expenditures before transfers totaled $17,430,000. And that's that third line from the bottom. That's an increase of about $800,000 or 4.8%. As you kind of go down through there, you can see the biggest one of those is personal services, that's your employees. And contractual services, that you'll see that the, a large portion of that increase is the mental health services for the police. And then you'll also see $122,000, and that's the growth in those grants that are being proposed. So if we look at a breakout of where percentage-wise the general fund money goes, that capital improvement and equipment, those are transfers over to the capital improvement fund and over to the equipment reserve. So those are major capital items, and that's 19%. Then you've got your police and court at 23%, fire 14%, public works 11%, parks 8%. And that makes up your big drivers of what you're paying for with your general fund. We talked about the citywide salary and benefits, and I told you that there was going to be a 3% increase for salaries for city employees. And so when you first look at this, you may think, well, wait a minute, that says total salaries 1.8%. That doesn't quite jive, but really what has happened over the last year or two, much like Mr. Yocum, Charlie is retiring. As we have long-term employees retire, a lot of times you replace them with less experienced, lower-paid employees, and so that kind of shifts that budget down. And so we are truly budgeting for a 3% increase. We've just had some movement in that regard. Benefits have a 6.6% increase. The biggest driver of that is health insurance. We forecast in a 10% increase. We won't know what that amount is until November, December, whenever the HR department goes out, they'll bid out that, and that may be more or less, but that's generally what we forecast because it's generally what it is, or the most it is. Yes?
Yeah. On the health insurance, the health plans, are we basically keeping the plans consistent year to year, or are we changing the benefits in some way as well? I was just curious as to sort of that process. What, each year you go out for bid, but what, how do we stack up and how does it change over time, the particular?
Those plans, I believe, and I've only been here a couple of years, but I believe those plans have remained fairly consistent over the years. You know, you're always going to have some changes here and there. I would say it's still a very competitive insurance offering for our employees.
Yeah, they're competitive. We will look from time to time. You know, we'll get some, we'll get feedback from our employees that'll say, hey, the dental benefits could be a little bit better when it comes to orthodontia. And so we will look and see if there aren't ways that we can improve, improve upon the benefits, staying within the budget. But our benefits are very competitive, but we, I, there's pretty much a standing order about benefits that if people already have, you know, doctors that they see and things like that, I'm very, very cautious about moving networks. So while we've done that, we've done that since I've been here, I think, just once. We went from UHC to Blue Cross Blue Shield, looking for somebody to give me a nod on that. And it took a lot for, it really was a financial decision because you have people that lose their doctors. So we try to be very consistent. We, what we don't want, if we can avoid it, is for people to get a performance increase and then because of healthcare, actually see a decrease in their paycheck. So we're very cognizant of that. I'm not sure if that answers the question that you're asking, but yes, we try to be as consistent as we can and improve benefits where we can within budget.
No, I appreciate that. I, you know, obviously, that's the big issue for just about everybody is healthcare costs. And 10% a year is kind of one of those things that eventually is really unsustainable. So I'm just curious as to what, what goes, what goes into it? And you answered, I mean, as well as you can.
Yeah, and it's not always 10%. I mean, sometimes we get it back, it's eight, sometimes we get it back and it's 15. You know, it just depends on what our experience, they've changed the law, so basically, we don't have as much control. Now, we still do have a wellness committee, or a safety committee, that kind of focuses on wellness, so we have the wellness incentive. So we, you know, if you go get your checkups, if you, you know, walk a mile, if you do these things, if you attend some of our luncheons where your luncheon learns about your health, we do try to promote through that group, healthy living, healthy lifestyle choices, so that we can keep those experience ratios down and therefore control our premiums. But as Donna said, we won't know the premiums for next year until after the budget's approved, so we budget 10%.
Sure, I appreciate, that's perfectly good, good answer. Thank you.
Okay. I've already kind of mentioned this, but based on comments that were made by the city council earlier in the year, staff has included in the police to budget $115,000 to provide officers with additional resources on mental health calls. Right now, staff is actively seeking grant opportunities and partnerships with other communities to offset that cost. And so at the end of the day, it may not be the full 115, but if, but we wanted to go ahead and get the full cost in there, so if and when the time comes, we've got the ability to do it.
Donna, if you could go back a couple slides, just to point out in the larger general fund expenditure. One more.
Your mic's off, I think.
If I'm correct, that's budgeted in the contractual services line?
That is correct. That is, that is the biggest chunk of that $287,000.
So that 9% increase is, $115,000 of that is attributed to mental health co-responder, which is a contractual, not an FTE. Just wanted to make, point that out, make sure that was clear.
Mr. Paul? Well, I, back when we were talking about that, that was one of the things that I brought up. And I guess, is it, is it for another co-responder? I guess maybe a little clarification on what the $115,000 is actually for? Is it?
I believe at this time that it would be for an additional co-responder, but do you want to care to add anything to that, or?
So the co-responder, it's about the cost for the current co-responder that we have that's split up amongst the Northeast Johnson County City. We funded the entire cost for a second one in anticipation of trying to add one here in '22. However, we are, I anticipate that we probably will spend $115,000. We're currently in talks with the other Northeast cities about their participating with the second one as they are with the first one, dividing up the cost. We're also currently writing grants, see if we can help fund the second through grant opportunities. And we're also reaching out to some of our corporate entities in the area to see if there's any grant opportunities there. So it is anticipated we're not going to spend that, but in case we have to go to loan and those grant opportunities aren't there, and the needs there, we're prepared to add a second one.
Excellent. Money well spent.
Yeah, if you'll recall when we talked about, great answer, Chief, if you'll recall when we talked about it, the issue is, is that this is something that unfortunately, we can't plan 18 months in advance when we, so having these funds available, when we know what that trigger mechanism to say, hey, it's time, we don't have to go through a process, we've already got the funds allocated, we hear loud and clear that this is a priority for the council, and we want to make sure that we have the resources available to do it. And if we don't, if we don't have a co-responder, or if we don't split the cost, that money will not be spent. That money will, that is for a co-responder. It won't go to anything other than mental health co-responder without the will of the council.
I just wanted to clarify that, so for right now, that's $115,000 bucket. We're not exactly sure where, what specific resource it's going to yet, other than we're setting it aside for mental health co-responder resources that are yet to be determined.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Hands?
I let some slides go past because I thought there were places, other places for questions, so I apologize for having to go back. So on your circle chart, your pie chart, you have a bucket for overhead. Could you explain to us what that's for?
Yes, I can. This is for expenditures that, what is included in here are things like property maintenance, property insurance, utilities. We include fleet maintenance costs. And so we include, we include citywide training events, legal expenses.
I think overhead, overhead is a better choice than this and that.
And that is exactly really what it is, is this and that.
Okay.
If you look at, on, on page 23 of, of your draft budget report, this year, under the contractual services, I tried to make those a little more program-related descriptions instead of just planning. I tried to make it more like risk management, or legal, or property maintenance. So I think that that might get you to where you're wanting to get a little better.
And then I have a second, second question. When we say the salary increase for staff is 3%, are we saying everybody's going to get that, or that's the merit, that's the top of the merits?
That is a 3% increase for anyone who is satisfactory. As you may recall, before Meredith left, I believe she did a presentation on changes to the salary structure, and in that, we had shifted to, if you're a satisfactory employee, it's a 3% across the board. Now, if you're not satisfactory, you don't get an increase, but.
Is that given on their evaluation date, or at one, one time of year?
That's given on their anniversary date, at the time that they're getting their evaluation. Yes?
Mr. Neal?
Yeah, I was going to ask about the overhead as well, but, and I appreciate that already answered, but also on the admin, council, and IT, what, what is the sort of breakdown? And what is, what admin would be certain staff positions that are not within a department? Or is that, I mean, does that include, obviously councils, the expenses of the city council, I assume, and the IT, is there kind of approximately, how does that break down?
Okay, and if you look at your book, and there is a page for, you look in here on page 12, you'll see that city council, administration, and then there's an information technology cost center. So it's, that's the break, breakdown there of those three. Administration includes finance, it includes the city administrator, the assistant city manager, or administrator, the HR function, it includes the city clerk, Kason, who is an executive admin coordinator.
Does it include legal as well?
Legal is included in overhead.
Okay. I'm just, I mean, it's the minor stuff, I'm just trying to understand kind of where everything's put in a, or?
They would have just been too small of pieces of pie.
Yeah, yeah. Gotcha.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions before we go forward?
Okay, you're keeping me on my toes tonight. Okay. And then, as I mentioned, there were several new grant opportunities added, and Brian Dwyer is going to come and talk to you about those opportunities.
Thank you, Donna. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Brian Dwyer, Community Development Director. Myself and the Assistant City Manager, Ms. Jones Lacy, will be going over this next part as we talk about the grant opportunities. We're going to be covering what we have suggested for the new, for the next year, for 2022, as well as some of the changes that we are recommending for our existing grant programs are already in place. The existing ones are the top ones there, Exteria Home Improvement Grant, our Franchise Fee Rebate Program. For those of you, that's one of those that sometimes we're, don't, folks aren't aware of as much. That is a program where the city reimburses income-eligible families for the city's portion of the franchise fees on the utility bills. So that's a program that's been in place for 20, 20-plus years, so. Then our historic downtown Marion Grant, Exterior Grant Program, Neighborhood Block Party, Residential Sustainability Grant, those are the ones, existing ones that for, we had for 2021 for this year. The new programs that we're recommending are, for 2022, are Driveway Replacement, Repair and Replacement Grant, Residential City Property Tax Rebate, and a Compost Bin Rebate Program. So kind of talking a little bit about recommended changes to our existing grant programs. The Exterior Home Improvement Grant, and then also the one there at the bottom, the Residential Sustainability Grant Program, those have been very successful programs. Both of those programs, we typically, we have had folks on the waiting list that we didn't have funds to provide them for, for their improvement or their sustainability improvement. So we're recommending for the Exterior Home Improvement Grant to up that grant funding from $50,000 to $70,000, and then for the Residential Sustainability Grant to up the funding from $20,000 to $30,000. Then the middle one then, the Historical Downtown Marion Exterior Grant, I talked about that a couple of weeks ago, mentioned that we hadn't any takers on that yet. We had put out a directed mailing to all the folks, property owners, businesses in Historic Downtown, and got some more interest at that point in time. Don't know if we have got anybody signed up for that yet, but we, based upon the comments and our conversations with a lot of the people down there, we've recommended some changes to that one. Going to recommend keeping the funding at the same level, but to lower the minimum investment from $5,000 to $3,000. So that's the amount that somebody would need to put into their building to qualify for the program, so lowering the bar a little bit, again, trying to broaden the field, give more opportunity for folks to be in the program, but at the same time, trying to balance out, making sure that the money that we invest, that the city invest or rebates, there actually shows some changes out there, some visible changes. Then the other one is to raise the maximum reimbursement, so that's for bigger projects. So raise it from $5,000 to $10,000. Again, that'd be for a much bigger project. But again, widening the opportunity for people to participate in that program. So new programs. First one is Driveway Repair and Replacement. We're requesting $50,000 for that. This program would repair, replace driveways of income-eligible residents that occupy and own their own home. Driveway must be in need of repair, replacement, or a gravel driveway. Household income must be at or below 50% of area median income as established by HUD for Johnson County. That's the same qualifications we have for our Franchise Fee Rebate Program, so trying to make sure we keep these compatible, so for the administration part, for at the staff level, and also the understanding of our residents. So that area median income is based upon the number of people in households. So just for an example, a household of four for this year, $43,000 was the household income that you would have been eligible to participate in the program. So that is the level that is at 50% of area median income. So again, it's a sliding scale based upon household numbers. Fewer household members, smaller number, more household members, that's a bigger number.
Brian?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah.
For the median income number, will that change after the census, or is that something we would evaluate next year, or is it based on HUD?
Good question. That stays by HUD. Each year HUD puts out that, that number. That really, that's a number that's used for a lot of different things. It really is born out of Section 8 housing is one of the main things that that number's born out of. But that number is used for a lot of things. It's also a number that we use for our CDBG application as well, so again, trying to keep that common through everything. Also, sorry, HUD is the Housing and Urban Development part of the federal government. So this, again, is a new program, so we at staff level have really been trying to figure out how to administer this program. Something's very different, so we'll be the first ones to say, this will be our first shot at doing this, so this is going to, could be subject for change for how we administer it if we do it again in another year. So what our intention is, to bundle all the driveways for staff to work with residents, to identify driveways here in the fall and winter, again, assuming that this budget is passed, to get folks eligible, you know, determine their income eligibility, and determine if their driveway is in need of replacement. So we're hoping to bundle all these driveways together and then put them out for bid the first of the year, trying, again, trying to get some savings of economy there. And then the repair replacement will be at no cost to the resident, so this is, this is a grant, this is a rebate, there'll be no cost to the resident. We anticipate the repair replacement occurs sometime in the spring or summer of 2022, again, hoping to put bids out the first of 2022, then start the work. And applications will be accepted October 1st, 2021, to December 29th of 2021, again, assuming that the budget is passed with this in there. Yes?
So what is the, what do you anticipate the criteria are going to be for determining whether a driveway needs to be replaced?
Staff regularly, or code enforcement staff regularly does this. This is something, one of the things that we send out, I give reports to you all about, you know, we've sent out 100 letters to folks who need to repair driveways. So it's going to be based upon code enforcement staff's experience in dealing with, you know, what is in need of repair based upon property maintenance code. Again, so some driveways may just need, you know, a small repair, some driveways need to be in full repair, so it's going to be based upon our code enforcement staff's experience in dealing with this.
But I guess in general, what kinds of things do you look at?
We usually look at it, the first one is if a concrete driveway is not a gravel driveway. That's the first step, and really, there's quite a few of them out there that fit in that category. Really, if it's spalding out, if it's shelled out, if it has significant potholes in it, that is, those are the big qualifying factors of it.
You know, major cracking, shifting?
That will probably be towards the, towards the smaller scale of things. We think that there's enough driveways out there to kind of fit that first category. We're hoping that there are driveways out there. Again, it's going to be interesting to see if income eligibility and driveways are going to have, those, both things are going to have to be in place, so it will be interesting to see how, how this program goes. We are, we're very interested in it, we're kind of excited to see how it works.
Yeah, I'm obviously real interested in it, too. I think it's, driveways are a major expenditure for, for people, and they also need to be, you know, taken care of.
Right, they're a major expenditure, but they're also one of those things that we've put in place and done right, they could last many years and decades, so it could make a significant change for over a long period of time.
Right, and that's one of the reasons why I also think it's good that you're maintaining some control over the, over it, because concrete work can be done poorly very easily, so.
And obviously, staff, we have, our billing official is experienced in, you know, watch proper and what's not, so, yeah. And again, first year we're doing it, it's, we're really kind of feeling how this is going to work out. Yes?
How many driveways do you anticipate $50,000 will repair?
Driveways are typically, and we went back and looked at this, typically, typical driveways being six to 10 grand. So we're expecting, you know, between six to 10, six to five, five to eight driveways, excuse me, five to eight driveways.
And your city staff has the horsepower to manage that project?
We hope so, yes.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons why we're trying to bundle them together, to put them out at one time.
Would you come manage my driveway replacement?
Yeah, again, this is, this is very much going to be a learning process for everybody involved. We're, staff again, is excited to see this program, for a number of reasons. One, we think it's a great way to do some improvements for folks, and it's a huge expense for people, but at the same time, also on the administration side, just to see how, how it works.
And I'm supportive of this. I think it's a, it'll have a significant impact, and especially for the people that can qualify. Just be careful that you're not doing a citywide buy-in program, you know?
I just, I too am supportive, this is a great idea. I, did you discuss whether each resident would? I, did you discuss whether each resident would need to maybe ante up something to be participating in the program?
Again, yes, we did, we did, but again, if you are low income?
Right.
That, you really are more interested in putting groceries on the ta, putting food on the table, and that's where your funds are going for. We did, we had a lot of conversation about that, but i, if, if you're low income, if you're at that fifty percent or lower, you really primarily, you know, keeping the roof over your head, keeping the heat on, keeping, being able to buy, keeping food on the table. So, there, there really isn't a level at which we felt comfortable to have people to bait, buy, buy in on it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was curious to, whether this would affect those people that have asphalt driveways, whether or not they just need a repair, or if they're going to replace it, I don't know if they'd want to, you know, go back with asphalt, but would this also apply to that?
That, that's a good, great question. We're anticipating if it's just a repair, would repair asphalt-wise, we'll, you know, if it's just a small repair or something, we'd probably just keep it like its material in there. However, if it's completely deteriorated to such a state that it's going to be a full replacement, we would anticipate going with a concrete driveway, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Silvers?
I'm really excited about these grant programs, but I was wondering, when it comes to the Sustainability Grant, or the Exterior Grant, or this driveway grant, when our code enforcement officers go out and they end up having to write up someone for a violation, are they informing them of these grants? Is there, is there an education side to this?
Yes, there is. Again, this will be a new grant, but for a great example is our existing Exterior Grant Program. Usually, fall, winter, code enforcement starts reviewing houses in need of, of repair, painting and things like that. And we will send notices, actually, I guess notice is probably too strong, where we send a courtesy letter to those residents saying, hey, we noticed your house is in need of paint. You know, come springtime, we expect your house to be painted. And then we also include the information for the grant, for the Exterior Home Grant Program. So, again, for this program, we're anticipating pretty much the same thing. Again, new program, so, but that's our anticipation, is that we will, staff will identify driveways that would fit within here and need a replacement. Obviously, we don't know the income side of the equation yet, so we will send letters to these folks saying, hey, your driveway's in need, or you need a repair, here's a city grant program that can help you. Yes?
How are rental properties taken into consideration with this?
Again, it needs, right now, we are having it as owner-occupied.
Okay.
So, it'll be owner-occupied.
Cool.
Any more questions on that before I go to the next one? Okay. Next one is residential, residential city property tax rebate. We're requesting a budget of thirty thousand dollars for this. This program is going to be very much like that Franchise Fee Rebate Program that I mentioned earlier for this. So, this will be just a rebate on the city's portion of property tax. We cannot emphasize that enough, but this will be just for the city's portion of property tax. And again, it'll be for income-eligible residents that own and occupy their home. Again, same income guidelines, fifty percent of area median income as established by HUD for Johnson County, so for a household of four, that's forty-three thousand dollars or below. Residents must be current on all property taxes in Merriam, and residents must have made their second property tax that is due in May. Most of you are familiar that property taxes are usually paid in two, two installments. Your first installment for, so for 2021's taxes, your first installment's due in December, and your second installment is due in May. Some people do make the full payment in December, but the second installment's due in May. So, the city will mail the rebate check after the second payment has been made. We anticipate the average rebate to be between four to seven hundred dollars, and we'll take applications for this starting February 1st of next year, and we'll take them all the way up to October 31st of next year as well, or until the funds are depleted, whichever comes first. So, again, very much like the Franchise Fee Rebate Program, just looking at the city's portions of their property tax. Then the last one, the last new program that I have, is a compost bin rebate program. We're requesting thirty-five hundred dollars for this. It'll be eligible, it'll be for, to provide rebate to residents who buy or build a compost bin. It's eligible, residents who live in a single-family or a two-family home will be eligible for this project. We plan to partner with K-State Extension to provide a composting workshop hosted by a master gardener. And if a resident participates in that workshop and builds a compost bin or purchases a compost bin, they'll get a seventy-five dollar rebate from the city. If the resident just does the compost bin, they can get a forty dollar rebate from the city. We'll be taking applications, we anticipate taking applications for this starting January 1st of next year, and run that through October 31st, or obviously until the funds have been expended. So, that is my, into my part of the presentation. Any other questions before I turn this over to Ms. Jones Lacy?
Chris?
I have just one, have we had anybody talking to you about compost bins? Anybody ask about those?
We, we get questions about just if they can put them in and things like that.
Okay, yeah, I've, I've seen some of them myself, okay, thanks.
Eva else? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Hello, everybody, first time I've been able to address you in person, so, good to be here. Thank you for having me. In addition to the programs that the City of Merriam is offering, we are also able to partner with some other agencies to provide additional assistance to our residents. And so, this has a two-tiered benefit of, while we are directly helping our residents, we are using the resources available to us through Johnson County and United Community Services to actually deliver the product. So, the new program here is rental assistance specifically. We are recommending three thousand dollars to go towards that, and this would be offered through Johnson County Aging and Human Services. They have some resource centers, our local one here in Northeast Johnson County is in Mission off of Lamar, and they often get requests for rental assistance. And the only city who had historically provided any sort of rental assistance through them is Overland Park. And then other cities have recently started to do this because they do have a huge need for this. One thing to note is that the American Recovery Program Act did provide significant funding for Kansas, two hundred million dollars for, for the Kansas Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And this is a program that is providing up to twelve months of assistance, both rental and potential utility assistance for residents in Kansas. But the, the caveat there is that it requires both the renter and landlord to participate. And if you have a situation where perhaps you have a landlord that is not very willing to cooperate, then the renter cannot get assistance through that program. This is sort of an emergent stopgap opportunity to help those who need funds quickly, that aren't able to utilize that program or to tap into it in a reasonable amount of time. So, this is just a little bit of funding to kind of see how that goes, and so that's what we're recommending for '22. In addition, they also, that Johnson County Aging and Human Services also offers utility assistance, and that is something that we already do. And we're just recommending increasing that for a total of seven thousand dollars, because those funds, over time, have really been, have gone down very low. And they've recently increased the amount of contribution that cities are required to give for each rental assistance payment. So, cities are now required to contribute a hundred and fifty to each household, whereas previously it was a hundred dollars. And then Johnson County also kicks in an additional two hundred. So, each household can get up to three hundred and fifty dollars in contributions for utility assistance per year. And this can go towards renters or homeowners. So, this is just an opportunity to help our residents when they're in need, and, and that's the other benefit, is that the CARE program only supports renters, whereas this program will also help homeowners. In addition, the United Community Services Program, they have requested an additional seventeen hundred, so that's, their recommended funding is at ten thousand for 2022. And the reason for that is they're really just trying to round out all of their city's contributions to make it a little bit more even, and also, of course, to support those in need as best as possible. So, those are our recommendations. If there are any questions, that was my contribution to this.
Yeah, did they use the same?
Excuse me, did they use the same HUD guidelines of forty-three thousand for a family of four to qualify for these programs?
Um, yes, so, that is the standard that, that Johnson County uses for qual, income qualification. So, yeah, they, they do have the same, same funding requirements, yes.
Thank you.
I think it's worthy to point out, too, we get, we've gotten requests from members of the council, members of the public, on, on how the City of Merriam can do a better job or more for helping those that are underprivileged in our city. And many years ago, we had a department that actually, within the city, did this, but we found this to be a much more efficient way, because we can certainly provide the resources for these county agencies to take care of it. We can earmark some of it for specific use for Merriam residents, but it's a way of having an outside entity in, more involved in vetting and making sure that the person's qualified. And so what we do, again, as a council, is we provide them with more funding when we have it to, to provide, so that's our way of giving back to those in need in our city. It's, it's something a lot of people don't know about, I think, just probably the ones that receive it, but it is, and it's also something that many, if not all, the cities in Johnson County are participating in, but I think that's the better way of doing it. That way, we're not trying to figure out whether this person's worthy or that person's worthy, and it's done by agencies that are, that are used to making those kinds of decisions. Yes? Oh, do you have a question?
You could see it coming. This is probably just my lack of experience with the numbers on this part, but the forty-three thousand for a family of four that HUD sets, how does that help? Like, I'm just thinking, for example, how, would that still apply to a senior who is living without, like, a steady income and, but needs assistance with utilities or something like that? Like, how does that work?
Right, so it's scaled based on your household size. So, a family of four, that's your, right, right? So, that's just kind of what everything is kind of benchmarked, is they give you the family of four. But they have similar income guidelines for a family of two, a family of one, et cetera.
That makes way more sense, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
All right, well, I'm just going to keep on going, so, we'll wrap this up. Unless I missed anything, no? Okay, so, proposed, this is just a total list of all of the grants that, that we are proposing to fund for 2022. And so you can see here, the total amount budgeted here is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand for everything that we reviewed this evening. And we believe that this will make a significant improvement to the lives of people in Merriam. And, and I can speak from experience for some of these, in that I operated some of these in prior, the prior city I was in. And it really does make a difference, and it, it's a very, for a staff person, it's always very rewarding. And I know it is for the council, too, to be able to see that something that you are providing to your residents is really making a significant impact. And we hear those calls, and we, we get that information, and whenever, I'm sure Brian will share those anecdotes with you all, just, because, you know, gives you the, the warm fuzzies, which is always nice, makes you remember why you do this, so.
Jennifer?
Mm-hmm.
How cumbersome is the quali, or Brian, how cumbersome is the qualification process? Is it very complicated?
We will be sorting that out. We do have some experience with it, obviously, because that's one of the reasons why we tried to line this up with the Franchise Fee Rebate Program, the same thing, obviously. We have a great deal of experience with that. Nancy Yocum up front really does a lot of work with those folks up there. So, it, it is going to be, again, a new, something new for us to learn, and we will be relying on Nancy to help us out quite a bit. And we do anticipate to perhaps be a little bit more, this is quite a bit more in regards to finance that we'll be helping folks with, so, and, and our expectation is to be, make sure that we are doing it properly. So, we will perhaps be asking quite a bit more, not quite a bit, but more questions when there's, you know, maybe some question, more questions need to be answered.
So, if someone has qualified for a program at the county level, can they bring their qualification paperwork to us?
They should be able to bring to, they'd be able to bring to us the same information that they took to the county, and we would, we would be able to use the exact same information. So, really what it is, and, and I didn't go, we didn't go into the, the high level of detail, but I do have it here. We obviously are going to be putting out informational sheets on each one of these programs, but the informational sheet, I got them all here, just a sec here.
Because my experience is sometimes just filling out paperwork is a little overwhelming.
Right, so, really, the, what we're looking for is an applicant must provide, provide their 2020 federal income tax return. This is for the driveway grant, not for the property tax grant. As proof of income, but some applicants that are not required to file a federal income tax return can provide us proof of social security, veteran, or other benefit payments that are acceptable.
Okay, thanks.
This would be comparable to bringing reduced school lunch.
Mm-hmm. In, in regards to providing the information, yes, yes.
Mr. Silver? I just wanted to highlight something, as all of you on the council and who work for the city know, that we occasionally hear from residents, their opinions on the city and city budgets and city spending. I just really want to highlight that this is almost three hundred thousand dollars that the city is earmarking as ways that we can directly help our residents improve their property and their lives. And I, I think that's a really great thing.
I agree.
Okay, we're ready to go on. Just kind of one side note, as you may have heard, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan Act earlier this year, or ARPA. Those funds were to go to local governments to help offset the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. Merriam will receive one million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, will get fifty percent this year, fifty percent next year. We have until 2024 to commit those funds, and 2026 to expend them. Right now, we've not even received them yet, and staff has not budgeted for the expenditure out of those funds in this, are not included in this budget. But at the time that there are plans for that, then staff will bring those to you. Yes, sir.
What type of things will that be spent on?
It's.
Can we, what kind of things can we use it on?
It's pretty broad, based on, there are different categories set out. Some of the categories were more restrictive, like water and broadband internet. But one of the categories was pretty broad, and that was to the degree that we have revenue losses, we can expend funds on any government purpose. And we had enough revenue losses that we would be able to expend those on any government purpose, and so.
And a good example would be, our community center was closed for a period of time, and during that time, we received no revenues. Well, we were expecting to receive X number of revenues, so that's some of the, the funding that we could file for.
Yes.
Are, are you, would it be possible to kind of work up a, a little bit of a explainer about, about that for us to, you know, just to, so we know what?
Yes, and let me say.
What the requirements are.
Jennifer really has kind of been the, the lead on identifying, going through and working through the process of, of this plan, but.
Well, what I, what I was asking specifically is, is if there's any breakdowns or, you know, the categories and restrictions, I think you were asking that same idea, but, but I'd kind of like to know, you know, obviously, that's a, a fairly good-sized chunk of, chunk of money. And, you know, it'd be nice to know what constraints and, and what. of money, and uh, you know, it'd be nice to know what constraints and and what, you know, what buckets those are gonna go in, if possible, as soon as possible, because, you know, it'd be, it will probably be a uh a relevant topic um for budget discussions and for um, you know, other discussions that may occur, so.
When did you say the first payment's supposed to arrive?
We should be receiving it this month, I believe.
But but these funds are just simply gonna go into our balances, because we're not gonna have new expenditures because we've received these monies. We're not gonna have less revenue loss, and we've already absorbed all of the expenditures and revenue loss in our balances.
Yeah, that's what I was wanting, just to increase our.
So it'll increase our ending balances, which is a good thing.
Donna, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Okay.
Um, so on that specifically, there's, there is a stipulation that says you cannot use it for reserves specifically, so you need to be able to show that you are buying a thing. So that thing could basically be any governmental service. It could be all of the police salaries, for example. Um, it could be a capital project that we are planning to spend money on anyway. The deadline to expend the funds is December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four, but then you actually have an additional two years beyond that to, if you have, say, a capital project, but um we'll have time to to identify those projects. We just have to make sure that those projects are um, you know, going to amount to that that um that total, and there are some additional restrictions such as you can't use it for debt service. Um, so they're very limited when it comes to claiming revenue loss. When you claim revenue loss, as we can, as Donna said, we we are able to be much more broad in how we can use those funds.
We we could also, just as an example, it's pretty broad, we we could take a one-point-six-eight million dollar stormwater project and pay for that with those funds, and now we have one-point-six-eight million dollars to do whatever we want to with. But we don't have that built into the budget right now, because we wanna see how other people are spending the money, what's allowable expenditures, so we don't need the money in the twenty-two budget. We don't have the money to do it today. So, and if you'll recall, we set up a special federal grant funding account last year, so they will not sit in our balances, they will sit in a fund that, and because it's over a certain amount, it it will be audited. And it requires a federal audit, so we have to make sure, so there's the, what we report to the feds that we use those funds for, and then what we used.
Right.
For with the savings of those funds, but we haven't determined what we're going to do with those funds at all, because we wanna see how other people are spending them to keep ourselves out of trouble.
Yeah, and they can claw back whatever is.
They can, but we're, but we don't necessarily want them to do that, so we wanna make sure we spend it correctly.
Trust you all understand this far better than I do, so.
Yes.
Yeah, this was helpful in in the sense that that's what I was trying to get, is that type of information, so to the extent that there's something that, uh, you know, could be put together on it, uh, if if possible, I'd appreciate it, because I I do think this is an important thing, and I know you guys are gonna do a great job with it. I just kind of wanna know what the constraints are, and uh if there are relative amounts in different buckets, what those are.
We can shoot you to a webpage if you want something specific.
That's fine.
We'll wait until we bring, until we bring it back to council and decide where we wanna transfer the funds.
That would be great, too. That'd be fine.
Absolutely.
And I've also been getting a lot of information from um NLC about this, so there's probably something there.
Right, yeah, there is some there, too.
Okay. So I think we've covered most of the questions as we've gone through, which actually is my preference anyway, but are there any other questions to this point? Okay. So now we're just gonna look at some of these other major funds, budgets, just kind of go through these quickly. Bond and interest fund, again, that is what it sounds like it is. Uh, funding comes from property tax, the uh city sales tax, the one-quarter cent that was dedicated to the recreation facility, uh, and then the transfer from the capital improvement fund of a million dollars. Oh, one thing, I mean, that transfer for twenty-twenty-two is a little less, because we have had some growth in sales tax, et cetera, so that's nice to see, to see that that's the case. Transient guest tax, again, this is our um hotel tax, that other taxes is, in particular, the transient guest tax. Uh, prior to the pandemic, we were collecting around four-hundred-and-fifty thousand in that. You can see audited twenty was two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. It's my understanding that the vacancy rate in the hotels has gone down and things are going better, but the collections that we've received so far to date this year have not been great, so we've kind of put in a decrease. Yes.
Would that, um, the decrease in transient guest tax qualify as one of the losses from?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, it would. Good point.
Yeah, Donna, I had a question. Is that projected out? It seemed like the fund balances in that uh that area was decreasing over the years. Is there gonna become a point in three or four years, or we're not gonna be able to sustain the programs that we're currently funding with that?
Um, that was definitely the case in the past. I don't know if you recall, but when we were going through the twenty-twenty-one budget, we did pull some items back out of that. If we get back up to that four-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred-thousand range, then we're probably okay. If we don't, then yes, you're right. Um, you'll see that in addition to that taxes, there's a miscellaneous revenue source of seventy-three-thousand-five-hundred. That's all the sponsorships that we get from the different city events, like Merriam Drive Live, Turkey Creek, et cetera, and so those two combined, um, if they get, if that gets back up to like around, well, we would still be a little short in there. I mean, definitely, once we see where the transient guest tax is after the pandemic, I mean, that's something we're gonna have to watch.
We also have capacity to increase the transient guest tax, should we choose to do so. Most of our neighboring cities are higher than us.
Okay.
We are lower than almost everyone else in Johnson County, so we have capacity to increase that rate, should we choose to do so.
Thank you.
Yes. Equipment reserve fund, this is where we pay for our larger equipment purchases. There was a total of eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand budgeted next year. You can see, we've got some public works equipment, uh, small amount of fire, we've got some police vehicles and other equipment for them. The two biggest things, we have telephone upgrade, the uh, at least pieces of the telephone system that we're using now date back twenty years and have really become uh out of date and really need to be replaced.
I was very excited to see this, having called up here or talked to Andy and had, we're having phone problems.
Yes.
Very good.
And then, in addition, the uh financial accounting software that we have is over twenty years old and is rather um, rather a dinosaur, and while we've kept current with all the upgrades, just the bones of it are not the best bones, and so we're having to, we have to rekey in information to Excel. We can't just download and do the communication, so there's a lot of improvements that could be made there. So that totals eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars. Yes.
So on the financial accounting software, are we looking at a a different software system, and that that cost also includes the porting of the data, or what what exactly is in that cost?
That should include, that should include all of the cost. Uh, I've spoke with uh the Government Finance Officers Association, and they have a group that provides um consulting services for uh software replacement, and in talking with them, and in what software we, what pieces of financial software that we need, they've, they've said that that would be a good estimate for what we need.
Are we anticipating putting, you know, pulling, so are we anticipating getting new software, first of all?
Yes.
And then are we anticipating, how far back are we um going to bring the data in the current system?
I've done this.
System.
I've done this two other times in my career. It's always kind of a real, real joy to do, but generally, it's two to three years worth of data, so, so we will have to get in there and archive all that we can out of the current system, and um, and then hopefully, we'll get a good, I would like to get three years, but it may only be two, so.
Thank you.
But I would just point out that we we kept the last software for twenty years, so. It's not like a fire truck.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm all about the data, man.
Yep. Bless your hearts for working on a single program for twenty years.
Well, it's it's actually, the the data is likely why, primarily why we stayed with the old stuff, is that it was so convenient to be able to literally go back to the late nineties and find out what we paid for whatever. Agreed, I mean, it it, all about the data, because we have that level of, but the reality is, is do we need to know what thing? Nothing that cost what it did in two thousand and three costs what it does now, so.
Yeah, I was just, I was just saying that, you know, striking a balance between getting enough data so you still have some history to work with.
Sure.
That's meaningful, you know, that's important to to me, anyway.
Right, right. I agree. Unfortunately, right now, the data's so painful to get out of there that, but, but anyway, this too will pass. So, okay, if we look at the, I guess, the total fund overview, uh, we see total expenditures before transfers of twenty-eight million one-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand is proposed for the twenty-twenty-two budget. So are there any questions on just that brief glimpse at the other funds? Okay. Now the fun part, we're gonna go back and talk about property tax revenues and the revenue neutral rate, so I'm just gonna briefly review what we talked about two weeks ago and kind of, not that I'm sure all of you remember it quite well, but, okay, uh, the twenty-twenty-two property tax revenue. This budget assumes a general fund, bond fund, property tax levy of six million two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. That would be an increase in the levy of three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand or five-point-six percent. However, the actual mill rate would have no change to it, it would remain at twenty-seven-point-five-five-eight mills. Suss valuation is two-hundred-and-twenty-six million three-hundred-thousand. Again, whenever we look at how that assessed property value is broken out, we see that uh commercial is fifty-three percent. The other is also really commercial, it's state-assessed utilities, so those together make up fifty-nine percent, and then, or fifty-seven percent, I'm sorry, fifty, three plus three is six, fifty-six percent, and then residential is forty-four percent, I apologize.
Thankfully, you don't need to use math a lot in your job.
No, I know, I know.
Twenty-year-old law.
Yeah, exactly. We still have the bird typing on the little stone. Okay.
Yeah, just to go, go back the one slide and to repeat what was, you know, my question the last time, was that about forty million of the commercial is in the restricted I-35 Tiff district fund, correct?
And so that.
Of that, of this, of these numbers?
Yes, that is correct.
So there's about a, about eighty million approximately in the general fund.
Yes.
In the commercial side, and a hundred million, or a hundred-one million in the residential side, approximately.
Yes. Okay. Earlier this year, the Kansas Legislature, they repealed the tax lid, which was what governed property tax levies, and they replaced it with this revenue neutral rate. And again, the revenue neutral rate is the tax rate for the current year that would generate the same property tax as what was levied the previous tax year, using the current year's total assessed valuation, and much last, like last time, I'll tell you, I do have an example for you, but the important thing here is it allowed for no growth in uh the CPI, and it allowed for no collection of new construction. And if the city intends to exceed that revenue neutral rate, we have to notify the council, the county by July tenth, twentieth of the intent, and the important thing about that is July twentieth is before our next city council meeting, and so tonight, we really need to kind of decide, again, this budget is based on the assumption that we are going to exceed it, so we need to have confirmation, or I guess, the news that we're not going to exceed it. So we will then, assuming we do, we will have to hold a public hearing to consider exceeding that, and then we'll pass a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And that hearing would occur on August twenty-third. To give you the example, to remind you of it, uh, in twenty-twenty-one, Suss valuation was two-hundred-and-fourteen million three-hundred-and-four thousand, the mill levy was twenty-seven-point-five-five-eight for a total property tax levy of five million nine-hundred-five thousand. What happened at the county this year is they determined that our assessed valuation was two-hundred-and-twenty-six million three-hundred-and-forty-seven. They backed in to that revenue neutral rate by saying, what rate do we need to accomplish the very same amount of revenue as what we had last year? And so that's a mill of twenty-six-point-oh-nine-oh, which is a decrease of one and a half mills, roughly. Yes.
So on that, on that previous slide, um, there's been essentially a twelve million increase in in the assessed valuation. What is that at a current mill uh rate? What does that end up being as far as tax?
That's the, that equates to the three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
So what we built the budget on was the assumption that we would continue to hold the mill levy steady, much like what we've done under the property tax lid, and so if our assessed valuation is two-hundred-and-twenty-six million, we held our mill levy at twenty-seven-point-five-five-eight, total property tax levy is six million two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand.
I think it's important to just remind everyone that we have not voted to increase the mill, the mill tax rate for eleven years since oh-eight. I think oh-eight for the oh-nine budget, it's been twenty-seven point something. I mean, there's little tiny variations in it, because there's people that appeal their taxes, but we have, the this, the city, this and previous city councils haven't voted in twelve budget cycles to increase the mill rate, which is pretty fantastic, to be quite honest with you.
Okay. Um, just because over the past, in the past, we were under the tax lid, I did this calculation to see where we would be if we were still under the tax lid instead of the revenue neutral rate, and what would have been allowable under the tax lid was four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand, which is less than um the amount that we're in excess of than revenue neutral rate, so we would have been in alignment with the property tax lid. Just one other thing for you to note, I did a survey of all the cities in Johnson County, and you can see that, um, this is all the major cities, and all of them were um planning to uh notify the county that they intended to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Mr. Silver.
Perfect timing.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not great with um budgets, um, so I I guess my question I need clarification on is, our options are to notify the county that we might, that we could, we would exceed the nu- um, neutral rate, or our other option is to lower our mill rate.
Right.
Okay.
And lose three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars, which has to come off the budget now. Is that true statement?
Yes, that is. I mean, you have.
If you guys look at what.
Your, why don't you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This will be recorded.
The, with all the the uh grants that we're putting out, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand dollars, and we're gonna be over. and we're going to be over by 328, isn't that pretty much wash? I mean, I think, I don't, again, I think I agree with us staying with our own mill because I think, yeah, it go up a little bit, but yet we're given almost that same amount right back to them. If they, they have the opportunity to do so. So, so I see that as kind of a wash.
Mr.?
I, I have a process question with this revenue neutral public hearing. In the old world, at the end of the budget cycle process, we had a public hearing to accept the budget, correct?
That's correct.
And so in the new world, we'll have a budget hearing, a budget, or an open meeting to talk about the revenue. And then at the end, we'll still have another public meeting to talk about the budget.
And if you, not to interrupt you, but if you look, you'll see that on here. August 23rd, we're going to have a public hearing, and we can make it one, we can make it one public hearing, but it'll be to consider exceeding the revenue neutral rate and to adopt the budget.
Yeah.
And then we'll have to have a resolution to exceed it and a resolution to adopt the budget.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my head around what does this whole revenue neutral rate really mean? Because it seems to me that every city in Kansas is just going to have a second public meeting. Because it's going to be almost impossible not to increase your.
There's a political reason why this law was changed.
And, and so we all get put on the hook for voting to raise.
Well, it's also, it's all about transparency, which I think we're all in favor of.
That's fine.
I don't know how exactly this is any more transparent than it was before. It just forces us to.
Yeah, that's my point.
To take advantage of the growth we've had. You know, we get new businesses, new neighborhoods, and all, and all of a sudden, our, our rates, you know, our, our revenues go up. We're supposed to ignore that so we can remain neutral. But at the same time, all these services cost us more money. So, I mean, it's really a ridiculous change in the legislature, and we're all going to suffer for it. But I really appreciate the fact that everybody's lined up and said, you know what? We're not going to play your game. We're going to go ahead and do this. And we're going to do it by virtue of the way the law was set up, and it will be transparent. And that's the way it's going to work.
Here, here's what's interesting about Senate Bill 13 also, is that you could choose to decrease your mill rate. But if it's a dollar more than it was last year, you're still going to essentially have to vote to increase the mill rate. So if we wanted to decrease our mill from 27.5 to 27, anything that's point 001, well, that's anything above the revenue neutral rate, you're going to, you're going to vote to say you're having a tax increase. So there are cities that are discussing, hey, we might roll the mill. I think the county is discussing, we might roll the mill back a quarter mil, which that's a substantial amount of money at the, at the county rate. But they will have to vote essentially to increase taxes, if you will, despite the fact that they're actually rolling them back. Yeah, so it's, it, it's, it's not a very, very good piece of legislation.
Mr. Fale?
Yeah, I, I would agree with most of what the mayor said, particularly this is a, a bad bill and what you put forward. I do think that the intent might have some merit in the sense that we've had many years where mill rates haven't gone up, but the assessed valuations have gone up, so people's tax bills go up. And there's some confusion among the public as to when we say, well, we haven't raised our, 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 our tax rate, but yet they see their tax bills going up. So that, in, to that extent, to the extent that it's helping to clarify for people how property tax works, I think it's good. Obviously, the fact that they didn't include a way to include new property that's brought into the, you know, and new assets that have been brought into the jurisdiction and inflation and other things. Obviously, it's a, it's a poor piece of legislation. The intent, I think, is, you know, I, probably okay. But, and I am glad to see that the other cities are doing the same thing. So, you know, I'm in favor of, of doing what we're doing. But I just think it's, it's helpful to, for people to understand property tax better.
I agree. I would think this is transparent. I think it's more confusing. I think to the layperson who's, who looks at this, by the time you explain to them what happened to them, they're going to be scratching their head because.
Or they're going to be angry because everybody's raising my taxes now.
Right, but I think we all are still scratching our heads a little bit over exactly what this means.
Nothing like poorly legislating optics for everybody.
Yeah.
How does this timeline compare to when we were under the tax lid? I tried to block out as much of 2020 from my memory as possible, so I can't.
Okay, if you look at the bottom part of that, it says, if intent is not to exceed revenue neutral rate, that timeframe would have been this timeframe that we would have had if we were still under the property tax lid.
Okay, so.
So it really just pushed it back. Right.
Cool.
And that changes because this year, this won't happen. But starting next year, the county will be tasked with, all the taxing jurisdictions will notify the county of whether they are, aren't going to raise the rate. Then they're going to have to prepare a letter, and they're going to have to send it out to everyone saying, okay, here are all the people who are taxing you, and these are all the people that are going to exceed their revenue neutral rate. So.
Mr. Page?
My question is just, sorry. My question is concerning the timeline. It's probably a moot point, but it seems like we're going to be talking about the revenue neutral rate resolution to actually consider it or to accept it at the next, or the first August meeting. Because if we, and I know we're not going to, but if we didn't, didn't accept it, then we wouldn't be able to adopt the budget. So it seems like that should be a meeting before that.
Actually, what they've done, okay, the, number one, the legislation specifically says you cannot have your revenue neutral rate hearing until after August 20th. It has to be between August 20th and September 20th. And if you're, if we say that we're intending to exceed our revenue neutral rate, we do not actually have to have certification to the county clerk until September 30th. That August 30th is kind of, if we do this, I can get it. So that's, and August 30th is the first date that we can give that certification to the county clerk. So even though we're adopting it on August 23rd, we have to wait until August 30th. So I'm not real sure why, why those deadlines were the way they were, but.
Okay.
But, but if something happens and for some reason we can't do it on the 23rd, August 23rd, if we don't adopt the budget, we have until.
September 30th.
Until September 20th to adopt it and September 30th to give everything to the county.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Wasn't that crystal clear?
Yeah.
I'd actually be curious to find out, to compare what our perceived overage is going to be to the cost that city staff is going to incur promoting this, public meetings, utilities, open, you know, opening buildings. I, you know, I have a feeling that's going to be a wash. Like, the money we spend to, to, to hold all these public meetings is going to probably equal what we're estimating is our overage.
Except we'll do it in this one, same public meeting.
Yeah, we'll do it in here.
We're trying to combine them all.
Yeah.
And we, we had one anyway before, so we just have to have two resolutions.
What is going to be costly is next year when the county has to mail out to all the taxpayers these letters of who is and isn't doing that. And I believe it's the first year the legislature, Kansas legislature is picking up the tab. And then after that, it will be all the cities, the county will then somehow tabulate each, each municipality taxing jurisdictions cost. And so we will have to pay some amount for.
That was part of, that was part of my.
In two years.
That was part of my thinking about staff.
We'll pay 10% of a 36 cent stamp or something.
Yeah, you know, and.
All the people that are, yeah, it's, it, it, the evolution of the legislation was, well, you can see if you read the legislation, that that is the byproduct of an evolution of legislation where the county clerks go, well, hey, we can't do this by here. Oh, when can you do it by? Well, let's put that date in the legislation. So now we're married to that date. Well, we can't, well, how, we do it in the first, and, well, we got to get it passed. It's election year. We got to get it passed. We got to get it passed. We got to get it passed. And so now we're, but this is, this is similar to the tax lid legislation. For those that were around before the tax lid, I mean, we, it's passed, it's well intended, as Mr. Neal put. I mean, it's well intended. I think the intent of it is to let people understand more fully what's going on with their tax dollars, which I think is always a good thing for transparency's sake and just to educate people of where their money's going. But it's, you know, there's, there's been hundreds of years, well, maybe hundreds, there's been, yeah, 80 or 90 years of how this has worked. And to all of a sudden shifted up by special interests that perhaps don't really understand how these things work and why they've worked this way. And then what ends up happening is we, we slowly whittle away at the legislation, and we put exemptions in it, and we add different dates, and we add different amounts. Because there will be, I believe, a large push that, that this is really anti-economic development. I mean, if you're in Overland Park or Lenexa or Shawnee or Wichita or Garden City or some of our, or Lawrence, large cities that are expanding and their, their business plan is economic development, it's growth. You're going to have a, a multimillion dollar development that's going to show up in your community, and you don't get to capture any of it. So why, why, why did we incentivize it? Why did we, like, what's the point? Why did we do this? And there, there's managers in Johnson County that are having conversations with their council about why are we doing any of this if we're going to have to say we're raising taxes when really all we're doing is asking the new person in town to pay their share of taxes.
And not only are we not capturing the growth, though, we're paying for police and fire protections that cost the city.
Because you're lowering all that down. So essentially, they're coming online free. Everybody else is still paying the.
And my guess is the, the tax lid was a, an experiment that did not work out as well as they intended. It had unintended consequences.
Because of the exemptions.
And that's why we have this new deal, which I'm sure will have as many, if not more, of the same. And so we'll see in three or four years them change it again until they get it right. Mr. Fale?
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what I, I would anticipate that we will see amendments to this because there's going to be a huge amount of outcry, because obviously this is flawed. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's good we're doing what we're doing this year and taking a stand so that hopefully they will improve the legislation, not with a bunch of exemptions, but with some adjustments that are.
Meaningful changes.
Meaningful, so.
Well, thank you for navigating all of this and all of these changes. And this is, all seems very efficient. Thank you. Let them know that was dripping with sarcasm for anyone who hasn't met me.
Since, since we're in, in a work session now, how do we bless this so that you know to go ahead and send it?
Nod your head, yes, that you understand that this is what we are doing, that we are planning. Now, there will be a formal vote on August 23rd, so if you don't want to nod your head, you don't have to nod your head. But we need to know from council that the majority of the heads are nod, nodding, that we are going to, that this is the budget that we built. This is the budget philosophy that we started discussing in April. And that this is going to be, that, that we can notify the county clerk that this is our intent. And then obviously, there has to be a public hearing, and then the council will, will be tasked with voting at that point in time. So, so that is our intent unless we see maybe head shakes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's everything.
All right. Well, we got a lot of great discussion. I think we at least know the direction we're headed, so.
Hopefully, this budget reflects goals and objectives and a lot of the smaller conversations that we hear that pop up throughout the course of the year that sometimes miss the budget discussion and say, let's, you know, let's remember, I'd like to do these things. These are things that we'd like to see happen. We do really try to hang on to those things and put them on the list. And so that when we get the opportunity to, to put them all together, we can roll them back out to council and indicate that we really are trying to put Merriam tax dollars to work in Merriam for Merriam residents. And I think this budget reflects that. So I want to thank the staff for their hard work and putting all that together, and thank the council for their support and direction.
All right, we're adjourned. We'll see you all next time.
Good job.